Good afternoon and welcome to the informational meeting Tuesday, July 26, 2022. As we normally do at this time, we'll have council remarks. Any council member have remarks? Well, I'm going to take this opportunity to address the tree drop-off that the cities had through the storms. And I would tell you, I've been out there a couple of times recently, had a little tree damage needed to be cleaned up, and it was a great service that the city did for the public to allow them to come out and dump off their trees. The pile is huge out there. I'm just slightly disappointed, though, that some people took the opportunity to place other items that were not trees out there. A little disappointed in that, some of our citizens, but it's coming to an end, the end of the month, so if you have any trees out there that have been damaged by storm, please take advantage of that. We'll move on to our presentations. We have two today, and they're both competing for the award on best presentation. We'll start with downtown parking ramp here at Quebec.
I like a little competition, so appreciate that. Look, they even know I need help with technology, so thank you for that, Mr. Roach. I was just here a couple of weeks ago and had the opportunity, along with Director Cotter, to talk a little bit about where we're at with next steps with the parking ramp, along with some aesthetic improvements that we're in progress actually on right now today. The intent with today's discussion is not going to be to necessarily get into a lot of depth with you in regard to the path forward in terms of development, but it is to talk a little bit more with you about what types of actions we're going to be taking in quarter three, and then ultimately, another council informational meeting that we have scheduled for the middle of September. And that meeting will be important because there are several milestones that I anticipate hitting before that meeting, of which you will be updated on at that time, and we'll ask for input from you all on at that time. So, a couple of slides for you here real quick. Again, key actions in quarter three that we're taking right now, including several informational updates that we have scheduled with all of you to make sure that we are being as transparent as possible in terms of the process that we're using and the types of actions that we're taking. And then also trying to provide some time to gather your feedback in terms of things that you may be hearing from the community, what they would like to see happen at this site, and then ultimately, if you're receiving comments from the development community or interested parties and you want to express challenges that they might anticipate or so forth, I'd be very open to hearing those today or in the future as well. Additionally, I just want to make sure that you all know that we are meeting with the parking board. We did meet with the parking board prior to the last council informational meeting, and we'll continue to do that moving forward. In fact, the next meeting with that group will be August 9. And then in addition to that, we have partner meetings scheduled with various partners that we work with on economic development opportunities, including Governor's Office of Economic Development, the Development Foundation, DTSF, and then, and we are including our Planning Commission and Parking Board leadership within those conversations as well, because we want their help in identifying potential opportunities for this site moving forward, and they are key partners to help us do that. Next bullet point here is informational discussions with industry leaders, which I think I mentioned last time, but will reiterate today as well, are very important for us moving forward. We want to make sure that in those discussions, we're gathering any feedback or questions that the industry might have, so that we can be better prepared for when we actually do solicit interest at this location, and we can provide interested parties with the information that they need upfront to feel confident about submitting a proposal of any kind. And I think I did comment on this at the last meeting too, but we feel that ultimately, because of the history of this site, despite it being exceptionally developable, it has some controversy that comes along with it, and we want to dispel as much of that as possible and help educate the industry and potential interested parties on what this site has to offer and what the capacity is of building on it moving forward. And those informational discussions will help us do that. And then lastly, we're working on developing and compiling informational materials that we can utilize with our solicitation of interest in this site, once we get that available, including the drone imagery that I showed you last time of the site in and of itself. I think any good developer needs to be able to understand and see the opportunity in front of them, and so that drone imagery will help us with that. And then in addition to that, there are architectural and contractor specs that we will be receiving from the folks that we worked with to actually build the ramp in and of itself that will help us move forward when it comes time to soliciting that interest. The September council informational meeting. There's a couple of things I want to point out to you, because we've got about a month gap here because of budget hearings, otherwise I would have had another update with you all during the month of August. But there are a couple of key milestones that we're working on that we will hit and we anticipate having updates for you on at that time, including a review of our downtown market analysis. Dustin Powers and Jeff Eckhoff and their team have been working on updating our 2035 downtown plan, and as part of that plan, there's a downtown market analysis that's being done. We will bring the pieces of that at least that are relatable to the ramp in and of itself to this meeting and help you understand what that might look like and how it relates to this site. And then in addition to that, all of the results of our conversations that we have with industry leaders, the developers, contractors, hoteliers, et cetera, that might be interested in this site and participating in those discussions, we will bring forward at that September informational as well, so that you know what the questions are from that group and the types of questions that you might be asked to comment on, to provide some guardrails, so to speak, when we do this solicitation for interest. And then in addition to that, recommendations for announcing and marketing the opportunity for submitted will bring forward in that September meeting as well. And then what I'll also be looking for from you all is discussion regarding a couple of different things. One, your development expectations for this site. Obviously, when this project first moved forward, there were expectations expressed from the council at the time in terms of what you all thought that development should contain, what types of activity it might bring to our downtown and the types of taxable revenues that would come along with that, and we want to make sure that when we actually do go out for solicitation of interest in this site, we're very clear on what our expectations as a whole are for that site, because that's the type of information that the development community wants and expects us to provide. In addition to that, the second bullet point here, which is important, is lease or sale of the site and/or air rights and what this body's comfort level is with that conversation. And what I mean by that is that during the last opportunity that we had, we moved forward with assuming that there was going to be a lease of air rights or an agreement to actually do that, and we have had interest expressed to us in lease or sale of air rights along with a sale of the entire property. So we need to have a conversation about that, so be thinking about that, be thinking about the types of questions that you might have in order to even feel confident about how you would answer that question, because when we do this solicitation of interest, again, I want to make sure that there's as many guardrails as possible, so the development community knows what will be palatable to you all and what won't be. So be thinking about that as well. And then in addition to that, there are always incentive requests when it comes to downtown development. We have held strongly in the past that this site does not necessarily fall within the same category of incentive requests as other sites in downtown does, just because of the fact that this is a great developable site. It has a structure there today. You don't have to worry about bedrock issues. You don't have to worry about contamination. You know what you're getting and you have an opportunity to build upon it. And I want to make sure, again, when we do this solicitation of interest, that we are clear with the development community what all of you find palatable with regard to incentive requests and what you do not. So those are the types of conversations or discussions that I want to have at our September informational. If you have questions in between that time, now and then, don't hesitate to reach out and let me know. We can provide any information that you need in order to feel confident about having that conversation in September. And I think some of this discussion, along with maybe other questions that the development community or anyone that participates in these informational meeting has, there might be things that, you know, come up through those discussions that you all will need to participate in and weigh in on at that time. That's all I had for today. I'm open to any questions that you might have regarding how this is moving forward right now or what our action steps are, what our action steps are, but again, I just want to make sure that we're being very transparent with what we're doing, how we're moving forward, and the types of information that we're going to need from all of you.
Thank you. Questions, councilors? Councilor Neitzer?
Well, first of all, Eric, I want to say thank you. This is, I guess, in my six years, I don't know if it's unprecedented, but it's close in a good way, and what I mean by that is very open and engaging and involving of the city council in this discussion, because this could go many other routes, which is, you know, the administration, you know, it's an administrative task, could write up the proposal and do a lot of things. So I really appreciate all of the engagement, and obviously, I think that will pay dividends down the road in terms of, as you said, making sure that it's something that is framed in a way that will be palatable to the city council, so we can try to avoid, you know, non-starters and things like that. So, thank you, first of all. I think you've largely answered this question, and I do remember when, I think it was maybe the site over by potentially Ace Hardware and a few other downtown, a few other sites, where you had kind of like a one-pager that was, is that kind of what would go out? Is that what you're kind of envisioning, like a sheet that has kind of a, you know, the city design? I mean, so it's not an RFP, it's not quite that structured, but would the verbiage more or less be constructed, given input from all stakeholders, including what we kind of envisioned, where it might say, we envision that we would like to see a development that X, Y, Z? I mean, is that?
Yep. For any process that we've ever used, we've always included qualifying statements, right? What our expectations are, any sort of due diligence information that we're offering. In this case, it would be, you know, architectural exhibits of the site in and of itself, so that the development community or an organization or company that might be interested would have that information and would know whether or not they even wanted to respond. I would envision something similar to that, you know, moving forward. I think it's important that we include as much information as possible in whatever we do, along with those guardrails that I'm talking about, right? So that anyone that's maybe interested or contemplating submitting, you know, a proposal of any kind understands what they're getting themselves into and understands, again, what this group and the community expects from them.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'd maybe reiterate what Councilor Neitzer said to the effect of, it's great that you've been in front of us already two out of three weeks, so it's a good start of keeping everybody kind of up to date on what's going on. And like you say, if you're trying to dispel controversy and be transparent, it's certainly sending the right signals, and I like how you're basically keeping everybody updated, but also bringing a lot of different people and groups into rooms and having meetings and getting viewpoints and really getting feedback from a lot of different areas and sure smart folks from a lot of areas before we move forward. So thank you again for being here. Maybe explain for the public's benefit, when you hear air rights, I mean, I always think developers in New York City and these type of things, maybe people aren't really sure what are air rights and how do those work, and you'd never really think of that in Sioux Falls in South Dakota.
Well, you don't think of those in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, air rights, which is part of the challenge that we have right now, because we've been speaking with different folks regarding the appraisal of this site, and air rights are not common, just across the nation as a whole, let alone in the Midwest and then less urban areas. And so air rights just provide someone the opportunity to build on top of a piece of property that's not theirs. And so we're talking about the lease or sale of the air rights on top of the ramp. And then we also, and I think we oftentimes forget to include this, we also own the property adjacent to the ramp right now too, which we talked about some improvements on as well. And so the air rights could include both of those pieces of property essentially, or they could be split up, which is an entirely separate discussion and one that we will have with you in September as well. So air rights are not entirely common, which I think is why we have had folks reach out to us, expressing interest in whether or not the city would entertain a sale of the entirety of the property as it exists today, including the existing structure, so that they have full control over the site. So I believe, Marshall, to your, or Councilor Selberg, I should say, to your point, your question, it's not entirely common, and that does provide some fear to folks when they start to think about how this could potentially work in the future.
Yeah, yeah, getting familiar with some of these terms. And my other last question is, I mean, have we had a lot of interested calls and people reaching out going, what is the timetable? We're interested in pursuing or maybe making a proposal and that type of thing. Have we had a lot of that so far?
We haven't gone in depth, at least the calls that I've received. I know Dustin and Jeff's team have received some interest as well. Mostly, people have been interested, especially following the last council informational meeting, reaching out and saying, hey, when you guys are ready to move this forward and advance this, please, you know, keep me on the list, because we would be interested in learning more about the opportunity. And those are folks that are here locally, hoteliers, developers, but there are folks out of town too that have expressed interest in the past of being a part of Sioux Falls' economic growth and specifically downtown that see this as an incredible opportunity.
All right. Well, thanks again for keeping us updated.
Yep.
Councilor McCarron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick clarification, or help me understand the process a little bit. Are you envisioning that the administration will bring to us in September, kind of saying, hey, here's a draft of our kind of perspective guardrails and expectations, or are you envisioning kind of coming in September, listening, and then bringing back a draft of expectations, guardrails? Just trying to understand how that works back and forth.
I'm proposing that we will come in September without a draft. We will have questions that have been posed today, things that I'm already thinking about, our team's already thinking about, along with maybe questions that we've received and we didn't even think about yet from the informational conversations that we're having, and we'll utilize the feedback that you all provide, along with those development community members and hoteliers and realtors and such, to then draft that solicitation. So if you remember the overall timeline, last time I had shared, our intent is to try to target, you know, October, early November, as far as the release of solicitation. This allows us a little bit of time to do that, and partially, that was important because we wanted the opportunity to be able to share the results of the 2035 downtown market study, not just with all of you, but with the groups that may be interested but don't really know if there's a market for specific things downtown. That will give us a little bit more support for those folks in terms of what they might be proposing. And then just the timing on getting this information put together and being able to go through these various informational sessions is really important, because we need to educate and we need to know what kinds of questions the community has before we can put out that solicitation and provide as much information as possible on what they need to do in order to be successful in their applications.
Thank you.
Other councilors? Councilor Neitzer?
I don't know the answer to this question, but as we go to talk about basically all of the options that are out there, including, like, as you mentioned, just hypothetically, a potential sale, it's been a number of years, I think, since we've done a parking study using somebody like Walker Consultants. I'd be interested, maybe you need to take it back and check, if the time has come that we need to do that, or that would be helpful in this discussion? I don't know.
Great question. We have briefly talked about that, even at the, just the very beginning of the 2035 downtown plan moving forward. I think there's an actual focus group that's solely dedicated to parking, and I, at least from my perspective, and I hope I'm not misstating anything, Dustin, but I was anticipating that if we needed another parking study, it would come through that group because of the types of things that were perhaps being suggested. So let me talk a little bit to Matt Nelson about that and see what his thoughts are. We have engaged Walker already on some of even just these conversations about their experience and history of developing on these types of existing structures and sites, and so that will be another question that we can pose to them as well.
Okay. And then another thing would be, you know, their experience with, I could see, you know, there could be things such as we continue to control it, and then somebody does air rights, you sell it outright, you could do a sale but a leaseback where we still can have control of the parking, so maybe a discussion with them of like what models maybe work in other jurisdictions.
Yep, absolutely.
Just so we kind of know what might be a wise move and what may not be a, you know, so.
Yep.
Other questions, councilors? I just have one, and you've talked about when you put your team together, so when you send out an email to say, hey, we got to have a meeting about the potential development on the parking ramp, could you kind of list a few of those people that you send that email to that are going to be in these meetings?
The informational sessions or our internal?
Just when you say, hey, we've got a, we just met with the council, now the administration team, and just kind of for our information, who you're all including in that?
Yes, and actually, our next internal meeting is on Friday of this week. Councilor Selberg is a part of that group. Given his experience in commercial real estate, I think he's a valued member of that team, along with Dustin Powers, Jeff Eckhoff, Danny Brown from our city attorney's office, Sean Pritchett, Matt Nelson, and then others as needed, but that's our core team.
Okay. Thank you very much. You're in the running for your least of top two presentations of the day.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes.
You've got Bieber up next, though, so.
Well, it's the ever-exciting Shape Places ordinance and proposed amendments. Who's going to?
Sam Trabelcock, City of Sioux Falls Planning Office. With me today also is Jason Bieber and Adam Roach, so we're going to tag-team this presentation, which I'm glad to know it's one of the top two presentations. What we're going to do today is kind of take you through, first of all, to kind of give you just a lay of the land in Planning and Development Services. Planning really is in four different buckets. Planning and Development Services, we got planning, current, future, we've got transit, housing, and building services, including permits and inspections. What we really want to talk to you today about is something that's on your agenda a lot, and that has to do with our zoning ordinance, Shape Places, and kind of get into some more details about what you're seeing every single time, so you kind of have an idea of why this all came about, first of all, and what we're trying to do and trying to control as part of that Shape Places zoning ordinance. So the Shape Sioux Falls 2040 Comprehensive Plan, you'll see a lot in the, in each one of these zoning applications that come in, because it has to be consistent. Any application has to be consistent with the Shape Sioux Falls 2040 Plan. And the last time that I talked to you guys, we talked about Chapter Two, and that was Shape Growth, and that was in relation to the tier maps that we had just recently adopted. Today, what I'm going to talk to you about is Chapters Two and Three, or excuse me, Three and Four, which really get into the heart of the zoning ordinance. So Chapter Three is Shape Neighborhoods, which is to guide the arrangement of the future neighborhoods and employment centers within the 2030 growth, 2035 growth area. In this case, we're already to 2040. This is from an old presentation. The strategy is to ensure overall objectives, intensity, and impacts of the land uses are consistent with the future land use map. So what we're really looking at and what you need to be looking at, and when it says it's consistent with the future land use map, what is that? It's this map right here, and this is the 2040 future land use map. And so, again, we need to make sure each one of the zoning applications that come through are consistent with the zoning map, especially rezonings. A lot of what you see here have to do, you see a lot of employment centers here, a lot of those circles are employment centers. So there's regional employment centers, there's subregional employment center, that's a lot of your major commercial areas, the mall, downtown, 85th and Minnesota is a subregional employment center. So again, you want to make sure that those areas, we've anticipated where the growth is going to go, what kind of land uses you're going to see there. We want to make sure it's consistent with that kind of growth, with the applications that are coming in. Chapter Four is Shape Transitions. That's to maintain a neighborhood character by creating compatible transitions that minimize land use conflicts, and the strategy there is to define the character of the planned zoning uses and develop methods to transition those planned zoning uses through our compatibility chart. So we're doing that through our zoning and our rezoning amendments. And same thing here, what we want to make sure, as you can, as you see with each one of our zoning applications, to make sure that they're consistent and that there's some compatibility with the adjacent land use. So as an example, you'll have a low density residential, you want to make sure that's not right next to heavy industrial. That's an obvious situation. You want to make sure there's intervening land uses in between. Maybe it might be a light industrial, and then you step down to office, and then to eventually to residential. And that's what this compatibility chart really starts to do, and we're going to eventually, one of the other two will show you the full compatibility chart. But just to explain it to you, what each and every one of these mean is if it's a five on this compatibility chart, and you just kind of go up to the row and to the column, and you can see whether or not it's compatible, whether it's compatible with minor conflicts. Both a four and a five are generally pretty compatible. They can be next to each other. There might be some minor things that we have to do with a four. A three has some potential incompatibilities, so you might have to do like a buffer yard, or you might have to do something. Maybe it might work best if you put an intervening land use in between, a buffering land use. Medium incompatibility, that, you really want to see if there's ways you can do a pretty major buffer yard, or maybe it is something, again, to look at another intervening land use. High incompatibility, that was kind of the heavy industrial residential. We don't want to see that. You want to see another land use in between. So again, those are the kinds of things that you're looking for as those zoning applications come in. So why do we have a zoning ordinance? A lot of purpose and intent that you say is to promote the health, safety, morals, general welfare of the community, encourage the most appropriate land use. That's what we're really trying to do. So Shape Places is the adoption and implementation of this comprehensive plan for Chapters Three and Four, and it was the first major update of the 1983 zoning ordinance. It passed city council in March 2013. It then actually was referred, if you might remember back at that time. Petitioned to a public vote in 2014, but 65% of the public voted yes for Shape Places, and it was, effective date was April 16, 2014. Our goals with Shape Places was to provide more development options, more density, more options for mixed-use district, gas houses, residentially compatible stealth storage, to create more consistent and predictable regulations. We actually had a lot more conditional uses at the time. There's fewer conditional uses, you'll see more zoning, rezonings now rather than conditional uses, new innovative site planning options, that's where we brought in buffer yards. We didn't have that before. PUDs, alternative site plans, things like that. We also, and you'll see this as just coming up, a more user-friendly format, more illustrations, more pictures to really illustrate what we're trying to show with those regulations. So we'll get into that, and we're going to, Jason next?
Yeah, Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. Just for probably a lot of your council members, Councilmember Neitzer probably knows this the best, since he was kind of involved in Shape Places, but Sam probably really doesn't get as much credit as he deserves. He not only wrote Shape Places largely in-house, but also did the Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan and did that all in-house. So really tailored this new ordinance from 2014 to Sioux Falls, and in my opinion, who have utilized the 83 ordinance prior to Shape Places, this document has really largely been a big upgrade and has really worked well for Sioux Falls over the last eight years. upgrade and has really worked well for Sioux Falls over the last eight years. So, I'm gonna try and cram in 400 pages for you guys in about 10 slides, so it's gonna move pretty quick, and there's a lot of stuff left to read, and Councilmember Knightzir has probably read through all of it, so he can help you with all that little stuff. But, this is kind of our big zoning map for the City of Sioux Falls, this shows you exactly what properties are zoned and what properties are located within the city. It's a typical zoning map, you see this, pretty much every other city has similar colors, they're all pretty similar, but your yellows are your single-family residential districts, your orange, you get into kind of your twin hometown home uses, your browns, those are our multifamily apartments, your blues are your office and institutional uses, reds are largely commercial and retail, you can see a lot of that at some of those big nodes that Sam had indicated earlier. We do have some light industrial, those are kind of the lighter purple on this map, looks a little lighter than maybe what it is, light and heavy industrial, we have the greens, those are kind of our open space parks, some ag land, also some of our large detention ponds throughout the city are kind of that green area, and then we do have our planned unit developments, those are the dark purples like our downtown, we have Lake Lorraine, and then a couple of other planned unit developments as we show on here. So, as part of this Shape Places zoning ordinance, it really went to a three-tiered system, excuse me, each zoning district allows certain forms, and forms are similar uses that are categorized together and generally controlled equally through prototype site layouts, number of dwelling units, building size, parking signage, transition standards, and buffer yard requirements that they use for planning and design. And just to give you an idea of that, if your property's own live-work, some of the uses you can do, you could do an office use, you could do an apartment, you could do town homes, you can do some limited retail, so it's really the developer, once that property is owned, that picks what form works best for the use that they're looking to do, and then within that form is gonna give you all the setbacks, parking, transition requirements, and signage requirements as indicated within that form. And now, we're gonna get into kind of some of the form, and as Sam indicated, one of the big things with Shape Places that they tried to do is really do these illustrations to give you an idea of what this form looks like, maybe as a property owner that's just buying a parcel, maybe what can go next to me, what is it gonna look like next to me? So, we get into kind of our single-family forms, and those are all our DDs, which stands for detached dwellings, those include DD2s, those are our single-family suburban, probably the predominantly used single-family form within the city. As part of Shape Places, they also created what was called the DD3 form, and we've seen some of that stuff come forward to you, those are some of those RT1 zonings allows some reduced setbacks to really, in our core area, to allow some of these smaller lots to be able to put a single-family home. And then, we have our manufactured home forms that we allow for an older manufactured home, and then we have a different form for a newer manufactured home, form, excuse me, and then we have our DD7, which is one of our higher-density, single-family forms that we haven't actually been able to utilize yet, but hopefully, in the next couple of months, we might be bringing forward a project that would utilize that form and allow some reduced parking, allow some higher-density single-family, and hopefully reduce the cost of a single-family house. As we move forward with that, then we kind of go into what I indicated as the orange and the brown, those are our multifamily forms. So, our AD forms, it stands for attached dwellings, those are twin homes, duplexes, and then townhomes, and really what delineates those from some apartments that we've seen, because a lot of the developers are building apartments that actually look like twin homes, but really, the AD, the AD forms are ones that are split with property lines in the middle, and each individual unit is owned by somebody else, owner occupied. And then, we get into our MD forms, those are our large apartment complexes, so the MD1 stands for multiple dwelling, that would allow you two stories and 24 units per building, and then we have a middle ground of MD2, which is three stories, 48 units, and then our limited sizes are MD3 form, and that would allow you to build an apartment complex of a limited size, similar to gray stone apartments at like 57th and Sycamore, very large apartment complexes. Then, we really get into our office and then commercial uses, BCF1, those are our one- and two-story office buildings, you know, your dentist's offices, some small two-story buildings, but really stays kind of those smaller office buildings. The BCF2 form, those are kind of our community service buildings, those would be halfway houses, like the St. Francis Houses, the BCF2, Children's Inn, that's being constructed, that'd be a BCF2 form. And then, we get into our BCF3, which are our large institutional forms, and you can see, this is a picture of Sanford's Heart Hospital, those specifically allow unlimited size unless you're adjacent to single or family or townhome-type residential, so those are kind of our big institutional and office forms. And then, as Sam indicated, we kind of have our retail form, so we have the RA1, which is the limited retail, we utilize that in neighborhoods, all the way up to RE5, which would be our target, so those would allow a limited size, and each one in between those is really based on the size of the building, so if you have a 25,000 square foot of building or less, you're in the RE3 form, if you're bigger than that, you go to RE4, and then if you're above the 75,000, you go to the RA5. And really, the reason for that is to correspond with some of our compatibility chart that Sam talked about, and then also part of our buffer yards that we'll get into here. And then, finally, we have our industrial manufacturing type forms, we have our WM1, which is our contractor shop, kind of small warehouse type uses, we have our WM2s, which is like our Amazon building, Morel's, and then we have our WM3, which is kind of our mining and heavy uses like that. And then, as Sammy indicated, he gave you kind of a brief idea, but this is our compatibility chart that's taken out of Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, and this is really from a planning perspective, as he indicated, we're looking for compatibility and to make sure uses are compatible by each other. But, one of the beauty things I think about Shape Places is we already built in those buffer yards and those things if something's not compatible, so if we're putting a single-family residential house against an apartment complex, well, we've got a three compatibility, doesn't mean that it's not allowed, but it could be some conflicts that we need to buffer towards, and that's where we get into our buffer yard standards, and you'll see a lot of this when we come forward with some of these rezones, we'll talk a lot about buffer yards and what the, what the different separations are between separate uses. And so, just getting into some of those, Level A are those small buffer yards, that's like a single-family house next to a four-unit townhome, so small buffer yard, you gotta have a setback, maybe a two-foot berm or fence, and then some landscaping units. And then, we go all the way up to a Level D buffer yard, which would be a single-family house next to Walmart, per se. Typically, that's not something we want to see, we obviously like those transitions, and we'll talk about those a lot with rezonings as we come forward, but if we did have that case, we would have a buffer yard built in there, which would be a Level D, which would be a 45-foot setback, six-foot berm, and then enormous amount of landscape units to kind of buffer those two uses. So, that's something that's already built into the zoning ordinance and really does a good job of not only separating those, but really providing that landscaping and beautifying the city. And then, these are kind of some examples of buffer yards that we had drawn up, we have a Level A at the top, all the way down to a Level D, you can see the difference in the amount of landscaping and the amount of things that go into a Level A compared to a Level D. And then, these are some kind of real-world examples of ones that we've taken, that we've done of level buffer yards throughout the city for projects. You have a Level A up in the corner, and then you kind of transition to a Level B that maybe has a little bit more of berm and a little bit more landscaping, and then on the left-hand side here, you have a Level C, which has quite a bit more trees and really buffers quite a bit better for those uses. And then, some of our larger Level D buffer yards, as we see on the right side, you know, that's a two compatibility, but these specific projects provided those large buffer yards to separate it and really make it compatible, or as compatible as can be what those single-family uses. On the north side there, we have, that's the Billion Parking Lot, that was at 41st and Minnesota, that was expanded over, significant buffer yard they put in, and then, as we keep moving with some of these core institutions, this is a Sanford buffer yard, where you butt up against single-family uses, this is what they, type of thing they have to put in to separate those and really give it that significant grass area berms, and so headlights aren't going into the single family. So, these are some of the things that the zoning ordinance does to kind of separate those uses and still make them compatible. And then, I'm gonna hand it over to Adam here, and he's gonna talk a little bit about our ordinance changes that we like to do here every 12 to 16 months.
Pop quiz on Jason's component real quick, just kidding. Thanks, councilors, Adam Roach, Planning and Development Services. Again, as Jason said, we look at our ordinance updates every year, every 12 to 18 months, and why do we do that? We look at industry feedback, feedback from our stakeholders, internal review, how are things going with our process, are things broken out in the field? Just so you know, we met with our stakeholders from the Home Builders Association, the Local Government Affairs Committee, I think that was on June 14th, we meet with the Multihousing Association on August 8th to run these by them. We, I'm gonna talk about 10 of them today, we have 15 total, the other five are merely house cleaning items, I know Counselor Starr doesn't like that term, but it's merely administrative type stuff that needs to be cleaned up. So, getting into the meat of things, we're looking at parking stalls, we want to allow the stacking and the queuing spaces of drive-through operations to count towards the minimums. What we've seen is the drive-through industry is changing a bit, there's some new changes coming out with Taco Bell and other different concepts, you know, a good example that we use is the Starbucks on 13th and Minnesota Avenue, if you notice, those stacking spaces go out on 13th Street, we really want to try to contain those on-site, and we think this might be a mechanism to allow such. Again, with definitions, frontage, we want to expand that to include future right-of-ways, so when our zoning and planning folks are reviewing plans, we are taking into consideration the future right-of-way with buffering, street trees, and things of that nature. Next, dwelling in townhomes, each unit is separated by one or more vertical common fire-resistant wall and property line, and this is merely to delineate between multifamily apartments and those actual condos that are individually owned. And then, highway, just adding Veterans Parkway to our highway definition, and solar farm, adding solar farm to the definition under the UT2 form. So, the MD3 bulk regulations, the MD3 form is our most dense zoning designation, what we want to change there, no height limit except 45 feet maximum when located within 150 feet of AD and DD forms. This used to say adjacent rather than having a distant separation in there, and if you look at the word adjacent in the zoning definition, it could be a 10-acre conservation parcel is considered adjacent, or even an interstate, a right-of-way could be considered adjacent, and so, we really wanted to set a standard of a distance, so everybody's playing by the same rules here. Additional setback is required when the building is above 55 feet in height, and then it just goes into the separation of one additional foot for all setbacks for every two additional feet in height up to 20 feet. If you read that five times, it starts to make little sense. RE1 principal uses, this is a case, we had a Realtor come to us, there's a young lady who's looking to live upstairs in this building in a commercial district and then operate her business in the bottom. Under the C1 rules, they're limited retail hours, we just didn't know why she would not be allowed to live upstairs with limited hours, it just didn't make a whole lot of sense, and this kind of gets back to the way things were back in the day, where a lot of shopkeepers lived upstairs, makes economic sense, and it's something that we think is not intrusive, and it's something that we want to push for. The example here is the Poet Corporate Campus, they established a wind farm out there, and the nature of the business and the industries are continually evolving, this is something that we want to embrace in our community and add to our definitions in the form, the UT2 form. Another minor one is landscape standards, what we're looking at doing is with the Veterans Parkway, that's gonna be coming through the southern edge of town, how do we really beautify that corridor, and that is to add one tree per every feet of frontage or every 50 feet of frontage there. There's currently no standard in place, and we've seen some different examples along the corridor where we really wish we had some green there, but we do not, and there's no way that we can make that happen now. This is another example that we had out in the field, this is the former Lone Star Steakhouse on 41st Street, as many of you may know, it was turned into a car wash, and we had them have a neighborhood meeting with the folks to the south, and based on our buffer yard standards, they would have had to provide a mix of planting, so trees, shrubs, grasses, things of that nature. But, what the homeowner wanted, and what we thought made a lot of sense, is just having trees to provide that actual buffer, those grasses, bushes aren't really gonna stop any of the noise pollution or the light pollution, and so, what we're asking for is an administrative sign-off for instances like this, and another instance that comes to my mind is challenging topography, we're asking for a buffer yard where we're trying to buffer from a property that's higher than the other one, and if we ask them to plant bushes and grasses, it's not gonna buffer anything, but if we allow trees, it will accomplish what we really want. With that, we're gonna work with our internal teams to finalize our changes, we plan on bringing this to the September Planning Commission meeting, and then first reading September 20th, then back in front of you guys October 4th. And so, with that, Sam, Jason, or myself will answer any questions that you have, and we're shooting for number one here, even though the chief's staff is present.
Questions, councilmembers? Councilmember Knightzir?
Your change regarding the UT2 form to allow solar, UT2 is allowed in a lot of zoning districts, including RS, so, I mean, is there guidelines in that where you're not gonna put up a massive solar farm in a residential?
It's not allowed in RS, correct?
Oh, I take that back, it's an RR, and then you have, and then we have some others, but is there, what are the guidelines gonna be? Is there?
We have those down, so the UT2, if you look at this, is really only allowed in the higher-density residential districts like apartments, and then commercial and office. So, the standards that we're putting in there have really been taken from a lot of other communities, and I don't have those right offhand, but we can get them over to you, we tried to mirror those, but this would really fit in to where we do cell towers and major substations, so kind of fits into that same form, but wouldn't be allowed in single-family neighborhoods.
Okay, thanks, I'm looking at the wrong line. So, related to, not related to the ordinance, but in general, a couple questions, how much, I don't think there has been a lot of uptake on this, and I think it's, I think there's industry reasons why, how much have you seen implemented of the RE2 streetcar form versus RE3? It seems like it's almost always RE3 that people are implementing.
I'll defer to Jason on this one.
Okay, and just, so people understand, basically, RE3 is parking-oriented, and basically, you put the parking in the front, basically, and the buildings in the back, and then streetcars where you'd have the building in the front and the parking in the back, and I think mostly, industry will tell you that they seem to want to have parking in the front because they want people to see parking, because we apparently here have to see parking or will keep driving, but.
Yeah, I personally, I don't think I've seen anybody utilize that, we do have a lot of existing properties on Minnesota Avenue that you think about that would utilize the RE2 form that are right up on the property line, just not one we've seen. As part of that, you know, Adam has been working diligently also with the development community on actually some of those major corridors and actually developing a new form to allow some vertical mixed-use type uses on there, encourage some density on Minnesota Avenue, so we're hoping that this new form would get some of that, people to actually utilize that stuff along Minnesota Avenue, but we don't see the RE2 being utilized very much.
Yeah, I just wonder if there's a way, if it would be, you know, if there's some sort of carrot in terms of you get certain breaks if you were to do RE2 instead of RE3 or in certain, you know, okay, because like, if we could, especially in certain corridors, because that's gonna promote things like walkability and things like that, to have more of a, you know, a streetcar sort of a.
And we talked about that as part of this, you know, we're still, and it was nothing that we're ready to bring to council, but it's part of that new zoning district and possible new form that we're looking to create, do we just utilize the RE2 form? But, it was difficult then to have such a big, to allow such a big building on an RE2 form when, as you, obviously, you know, as you go up to RE3, RE4, RE5, they allow bigger uses, so that was talked about because it hadn't been used very much, maybe that's where we can incentivize it a little bit more, but possibly, we've kind of moved away from that a little bit to create a different form that would allow, similar to what you're talking about on Minnesota Avenue and some of our other corridors that we're looking at.
Okay, good, and anything that you can do in terms of promoting mixed use?
Mm-hmm.
Good. The United States, including the City of Sioux Falls, is known for having enormous amounts of parking, lots of parking, in many cases, you drive by and you see just seas of parking not being utilized. Some cities have gone to abolishing parking minimums, some have even, some have gone to things like parking maximums so that you can't build massive parking lots. Have you done any looking at that, and just even thinking about that?
Absolutely, that's one of the main components of this new form that we'd be looking at, and really, this all came about because we had a developer possibly looking at tearing down a bunch of existing buildings on Minnesota Avenue and building one Lone Starbucks, and then 50 parking spaces, which in a planning perspective isn't very efficient. then fifty parking spaces, which in a planning perspective isn't very efficient. So that's where we started maybe getting into these discussions. And one of the big steps that Adam brought forward to you tonight is being able to count those stacking spaces for these as parking spaces. But absolutely, we've looked into that, and we're looking into that any way that we can maybe split with those mixed uses where the commercials using it eight to five and the residences are using it five to eight in the morning is absolutely what we want to promote. Sometimes we, what we've been running into those, actually, some of the developers in town, we've heard from them that their standard for their apartments is actually more than we require right now. So we're looking at ways to try and incentivize that because we see all these underutilized parking lots, especially on Minnesota Avenue, that we don't want to see in the future. We'd rather see them to be utilized with some sort of mixed uses. So absolutely.
And I will tell you, I won't, I won't name the name because I don't want to shame anybody, but there's a particular pedestrian-oriented development in which there's enormous amounts of parking. And in talking to the developer, a lot of it comes from the corporate motherships of the big boxes who say, no, we have to have five hundred parking spaces. And then it kind of ruins the whole idea of the whole walkability and connectivity because you've got these enormous parking lots taking up what was supposed to be a pedestrian-oriented, walkable area that's turned into, looks kind of as suburban as about everything else.
Yep, absolutely.
Difficult.
Yep, and those are the things, you know, we've looked at those specific, you know, those PUDs to allow share parking, but like you said, sometimes it's those corporate people in Washington DC that are saying, this is what Sioux Falls needs, and it's not always the case. But we are looking at those specific ways to reduce parking, absolutely.
Do you mind if I finish up, or do you want to...
Let's get some other councilors in here. Counselor Silver.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the presentation. Maybe walk folks through a real quick, let's say somebody wants something rezoned, reclassified. Maybe tell people what did they go through in that process? Like something, for my world is, let's say there's a commercial piece of land and it's zoned for office, but they want to come and make it retail or a convenience store or whatever it is. What's the process there? And is that the same as, let's say, somebody wants something rezoned from single-family to twin home and that type thing? Where do they start and what are they doing?
Yep, great question. So the process is going to be the same for any rezoning. That's an application that is submitted to the planning office by a deadline. It's usually the first Monday of a month. And then, and then as part of that, then we would review that application. Some of the easier ones that you're talking about maybe go through pretty easily. Some of the larger ones, if specifically if it's a vacant parcel and you're going to an apartment that we've seen now, we really want to facilitate not only them developing a good site plan and giving us kind of that site plan to show as part of their rezoning, but also encourage them to do a neighborhood meeting, which usually staff attends to try and hear the discussion. We don't lead the discussion, but we want to be there to answer questions and any issues that we're going to have with the neighborhood prior to the Planning Commission, if we can head those off. And sometimes it's simple stuff like, I'd rather have a vinyl fence than a wood fence. I mean, sometimes it's easy stuff. But as we're going through that process then, and then we're getting comments from other departments, we're writing a staff report, and then we would take them to the Planning Commission meeting, and they're a land use body, and you see a lot of that for your new members. You'll see a recommendation that's part of the agenda coming towards you. And then we go to that meeting the following month, and then we would come to the City Council then for the first reading, which is the third Tuesday of the month, and then the final reading, which is the first Tuesday of the following month. So from application to approval and effectiveness is usually about three months or so, depending on the timeline. But the application process is all the same, those meetings are all the same. It really depends on the type of rezoning, and if it's surrounded by a neighborhood or surrounded by certain uses, then obviously we take a little bit more care, we need to do more meetings, and it may take a little bit longer, so...
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Other questions? Counselor McCarus.
This question, I guess, for anybody on the team, kind of zooming out a little bit and just looking at one of the comments that I hear quite frequently, besides speeding in neighborhoods, which is a common complaint. Next complaint I hear quite often is, hey, I was told this, but then this ended up happening. And just zooming out a little bit, wondering, is this a zoning issue? Is this a process issue, or is this an employee performance issue? So just trying to understand, as citizens are hearing one thing, and then two years later, something different happens. And I understand that they might not be hearing what they should be hearing, but is there anything that we need to do from a zoning perspective, ordinance perspective, that would help where we're not getting so much of that? They said they were going to do this, three years later, they did that.
Typically, you know, it's a little bit of everything. Typically, we like to get these neighborhoods, you know, if we annex something in and then zone it, you want to get it all zoned before people start building around there. Because one of the big things of shape places, what we really wanted was predictable zoning regulations. If your property's next to you's own commercial, you're probably going to get retail, right? And so we wanted those predictable regulations. We've really, over the past couple of years, we've really gotten realtors to engage in us a little bit more. I think that was part of the problem. They maybe didn't know what was going to go there. We get a lot of calls from them, we present a lot to them. So there are going to be, there are going to be changes that are going to come forward to you guys that maybe aren't popular, but what we look at then is those compatibilities. What we struggle with a lot is office and multifamily, you know, they're pretty, they're pretty similar, right? So if something's going from office to multifamily with a compatibility chart, we're saying it's the same compatibility, but that's not always what citizens of Sioux Falls really see. They feel like apartments are way more intrusive than offices. So one of those things we like to do then is try and zone more things live-work, because when you buy a house, you know it could be office or apartments, right? You're not going to get the bait and switch. It could be this or that, but you know that it could be apartments, and we don't get office going to multifamily. That's really where we come in with the biggest problems with neighbors, and I understand that. And Councilmember Nightzer's made some changes to some of our forms to maybe make it a little bit more of a buffer yard with those two, three-story apartments next to single-family.
One more question. Final question of the year, are we being aggressive enough? We hear all the time, we got a density, we got to have more density, you got to have more, more density. I know unpopular again, so that kind of sounds like I'm even talking out both sides of my mouth, different questions. Are we being aggressive enough in pursuing that? Or what do you need from us as a council to make sure that we're pursuing more density in the community?
I think from my perspective, and you maybe hear this from the future planners as well, and Sam maybe can talk a little bit about it too, but it's a little scary if we continue to grow out, supporting and paying for infrastructure as we go out. So from my perspective, we need to become more dense, but that doesn't always mean that, that we have to become more dense right next to the single-family. There's a lot of these, as I indicated before, underutilized parking lots on Minnesota Avenue. There's a lot of underutilized sites that we could go up if we can just start, you know, maybe getting the people to sell those or maybe developers getting interested in that. But absolutely, on our major corridors, our arterial streets, we need to try and get more dense.
Other councilmembers? Counselor Nightzer, you got a follow-up?
Yeah, I've got a couple, if it's okay.
Well, it's not a planning meeting, but go ahead.
Okay, no, it's fine. Boats and recreational vehicles. We seem to go in circles, and if I poll the community, I'll get fifty-fifty, which is, I don't want boats and recreational vehicles on my neighbor's driveway versus, who are you to tell me what to do? Why can't I have my boat and my trailer and whatever else on the driveway, as long as I'm not blocking the sidewalk? Thoughts? I mean, I go in circles on this. I'm torn.
It's a very difficult discussion, and I know it was, gosh, eight years? Were you on the, I don't know if you were on the council when we changed that, or the council changed it to forty-eight hours.
The RV thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Okay, so that was before your time. So originally was not allowed at all to pack or park a recreational vehicle in your driveway. The council changed it to allow forty-eight hours for loading and unloading, which if everybody follows that specific rule, I think it works well. The problem that we run into from an enforcement standpoint is kind of chasing our tails, right? Because you get a complaint, you got to go out there, get a picture, come back forty-eight hours later to make sure it's still there. And then what we run into with some of those property owners is, well, I moved it afoot, I get forty-eight more hours. Well, that's not the intent of the ordinance. So it's, so it's difficult. I think if everybody followed, hey, I'm coming home Sunday, I want to unload my RV on Monday, and took it to its permanent spot on Tuesday, and then brought it back on Thursday to load it, to leave on Fri-, we'd all probably be good, but the problem is trying to get everybody to do that, so...
No, no, those are RVs. Now, you know, we've got other recreational things. I mean, like a trailer with a jet ski on it, or I want to keep my boat on the driveway all summer because I go out to the lake every weekend, and otherwise I have to go park it in some storage facility. And so anyway, it's just, I don't know, and maybe it's, it's probably ultimately up to any particular council to decide which route they want to go.
It is. You're absolutely right. There's half the city that owns an RV or a trailer that wants it there, and there's the other half of the city, like myself, that doesn't own one, that would rather not have them at all. So it's kind of that discussion. You have that, if it's something to pursue, you have, get that core group, you do a lot of meetings, and you kind of come to a decision. Is it a compromise? You leave it the same? You go back to not allowing it, or you always allow it? I mean, that's just really what we have to do.
And my last two, which are important. Sensitive uses. In the zoning ordinance, nowhere does it say that a parcel outside of city limits is treated as a, as a sensitive use, but we do it anyway.
Yep, you're correct.
So why? Who decided to do that? So perfect example, somebody wants to build an apartment in city limits, and it's, there's a rural parcel, for example, might be some farmstead or something like that, and then they have to put in like a level-whatever buffer yard or something like that for a parcel that isn't in city limits. They're not a citizen of the city of Sioux Falls, they don't have to follow our laws, they don't have to follow our zoning ordinance. It may switch over, and we have to do this buffering, or the developer or builder has to, for something that might change. I've always struggled with that.
Yeah, and it's always been, as when Shape Places was passed by the voters, it's just always something that we've interpreted it as, we're going to protect these, these people that are within this, are outside of the city, but maybe are a single-family, as if they were a single-family in the city, right, wrong, or indifferent. And that's another discussion we could have with those, because we have run into some of that specifically, you know, remember Eightieth Street? We've got a lot of neighbors out there, and once that interchange, if that goes in, we're going to run into some of that. But that's just something we've always done and really haven't had much pushback from developers or anybody building out there, to be honest with you, so...
Finally, and this is the MD-two form, and as you referenced, I did make a change to that, but that form and live-work has continued to be, I think, probably the most controversial form, in my opinion, throughout my term. And I've continued to struggle, and I'll just be open, I've been trying to figure out how I could potentially, and I've talked to you about it, about how I could nuance it a little bit, because it seems like what the zoning ordinance and what the compatibility chart thinks and what citizens seem to think aren't always jiving, especially when it's a three-story. That's the issue with that whole MD-two form, is when it goes up to three stories. That's really triggers people. And even that thirty-foot buffer yard gets to be, it's really a struggle, and we need to have mixed uses, we need to have all of that. So I struggle on one side, but I, but in the live-work form, just food for thought for everybody, in the live-work form, you can go everywhere from, is it, I think, four plexes or four...
You could do a twin home all the way up.
Twin unit all the way up. And so as an example, when you were talking about people knowing what's going to happen if it's zoned live-work, you know, in the case, you know, over there on the west side of Sioux Falls, which we were just dealing with, again, in that particular case, one developer owned the land for many years and told everybody, I'm going to do a dentist office or something like that. It was going to be office for many years. That's what everybody was told that did their due diligence, and I believe that developer was telling the absolute truth. I'm going to do like a, just a dentist office, one-story, two-story. Years down the road, another developer buys it, it's zoned live-work, and with live-work, you can go all the way up to this MD-two, and they do a three-story apartment, and suddenly a three-story apartment is going up in somebody's backyard, of which they had been told for years that it's not going to be that. And it just seems like that's a huge variance in one zoning district to go all the way from twin home all the way up to a three-story apartment, and there's no trigger in between where the neighbors have any input whatsoever. They just get it. And unfortunately, in that particular case, they got the Level B buffer yard before my change went in. But they, the builder did put it back thirty feet anyway. But anyway, I struggle with that, that there's no, I mean, those neighbors are very, very irritated, and they just feel like they were bait and switched. And that's where, that's where us as policymakers and you were always put in this terrible position, because they just felt like they, you know, everybody, nobody lied. Nobody did anything that they weren't supposed to do. Everybody followed the rules, but they still feel like they got cheated.
And as you look at some of those, and totally agree with you on that one, it wasn't something that the original developer had shown and shown the neighborhood when they rezoned to that. But typically, when we're doing these new developments, if you look at it and when you start seeing them come forward, we're trying to put live-work and then a buffer of, you know, RD-one or RD-two next to them. However, you know, what we struggle with then is we have the blue to orange to yellow, right? That looks really good. What we struggle with then is you buy this orange parcel and building a single-family house here instead of, you know, a twin home or townhome on that specific lot, and then that kind of skews that all off. But if you look at those new developments, I mean, we want to see the blue, live-work, and then not single-family right next to it. We're not opposed to it, but we'd rather see those transitions, and we've seen more of that, but it's, but it's the real world if they're actually going to build that, so...
Well, and to finish off, I've thought about a few different ways in which one could address it, like, for example, you could prohibit three stories in the MD-two and create another form. You could do a lot of different things, but then there's challenges with that, land is expensive. The reason we're seeing so many three stories, developers tell me, is because going up is cheaper than going out, because it's less land. So forty-eight units going up is way cheaper than going way across, way over. But again, the three-story thing is a trigger. And then I've, so I've thought about prohibiting that, but then, you know, you'd have to create another form or something like that, and that creates constraints for them. And then the other thought would be maybe a conditional use, but then what would you, you know, I mean, you have to say like, if you want to do it and it's right next to a single-family or something, then you have to do a conditional use permit. The question would be, what would be the conditions beyond a buffer yard, I guess? It would be more of a, almost like a, do you like it or not? Vote it up or down sort of a thing, but at least neighbors would have some input into it. So I don't know, I would just challenge you to think about it. I've been thinking about it. There's a balance. We want to make sure we have density, we don't want to make it impossible to do it. I'm all for that, but I struggle with the vast array of things in live-work.